Well, welcome, everybody. Randy, would you like to do the oath, please? And John Hayes.
Present.
Lori Choate.
Here.
Cora Collier.
Here.
Brock Deers.
Present.
And Randy Brooks. All right, great. And we have any public comments?
My name's Kenny Morning. I led a 235 pairs ride. You probably knew that.
Yes.
Anyway, I want to thank you all for putting up that sign. It's a real nice looking sign, professionally done. But there's a bit of a problem with it, maybe.
Okay.
I don't know if any of you guys are even aware, but the town put in a, I think it's about a 14-inch drain tile. It runs through the front of my property. And it runs about a mile out across. Probably right underneath the playset.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anyway, I looked at that sign the other day and I thought, oh, my God. Because you couldn't have lined it up at the center of that pipe any better if you'd have measured it.
So we need to have the sign moved?
Well, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, if it's not in the pipe, I would say no, because it's pretty good location. But, you know, I don't know how we find out if it's there, short of doing locates.
How deep was the pipe put in?
Well. I, I don't have that information. I mean, I've seen every bit of it.
Yeah.
Since I'm at the very head of it. It's probably at its shallowest point. And then it just kind of. It's probably about the same depth all the way.
Yeah.
Because the ground naturally just kind of drops off, if I remember correctly. But anyway, if it's not in it, great. If none of the play toys and stuff.
Start flooding.
Because they were out there with drills and stuff.
Uh-huh.
If none of that's in it, that's great.
Okay.
But I'll tell you the truth, I think before there's any more. Any more future construction that goes on anywhere where that pipe kind of is. I think somebody needs to do some locates, because that's not just for my place. That's for that entire subdivision. It drains water even from.
Yeah, I hear say Lauren's got his hand up, so he's got.
So I, I really would like to see some locates done and a map made, because we really need to know where that is. You know, because I watched the guys when they were drilling out there and I thought, oh, my God. Because you'd never even know if you hit it.
Right.
It's just plastic pipe. And.
So Lauren, do you know who put that sign up? Did you guys have the?
I have no idea who put the sign up. Uh, it goes along his, uh, north property line. And it goes over to the pond.
Okay.
Okay. Also, there's fiber optic lines that run, uh, three or four foot back from the.
Forgot about those.
His, his, uh, south property line.
Yeah, I forgot all about those things. Yeah, they did.
And we just kind of willy-nilly go out there and put some.
Those, those fiber optic lines goes over and feeds, uh, Holston.
Ooh, don't hit those.
Oh, they can be quiet for a while.
So, yeah.
But locates on those would be fairly simple.
Yeah.
Uh, to do a locate on the drain pipe.
Locate before they put a sign up.
I really thought so.
I would think that would be standard.
Well, you may not even have known there was a drain pipe there, but it does belong to the town.
Well, they don't know it's there, that's the thing.
Well, they did.
And the fiber optic lines, most people don't even realize they're, they're there, because they've been put in a long time.
Yep.
E- even if they. Okay. Yeah, and I don't know, because town council took over that and did the sign, so I don't know who. Put the sign up. I don't even know who they had do the sign.
I, I'm not totally concerned with the sign, because if I notice any kind of problems, I'll just shake it out myself.
So does.
I'm just looking at future.
Future, when we're doing things at the park.
Yeah, because I know you're not done.
Yeah.
But I really don't think there should be any work commenced over there on that area until this is at least. Yeah, we know where this is.
We know there's, we know there's tile, there's one running probably both directions in that field.
Well, there's tiles.
One goes from his place over to the pond.
Mm-hmm.
Then it goes over, uh.
No, 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 no. That tile ran from my place and it went a mile all the way across the next county road and down to the field. And there were no, there were no intersections anyway, when they put that in.
Anyway, then, then it goes from the pond out across, uh, uh, some fields.
So it does go over to the swamp?
Yes.
So what they, where did they put a teeth in it?
It doesn't, it didn't. It was, it was, it was built into, see, they've got that move, drain pipe thing.
Let's see your riser.
A riser, unless it's, you know, all underground, underground.
Well, anyway, I know if it screws up and gets plugged up. It's a mess.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will make note of that and that, that we feel like we need to be responsible and do a locate before we do any more construction at the park.
I think that the.
And your concern is, I mean, I, I don't think there's any, probably any fiber optic going through that field. But the tile is what you're concerned about, the drainage tiles more than anything.
Yes, very concerned with that. But you don't want to hit the fiber optic either. That gets kind of costly.
Yeah, but I, I almost said there's more.
Three days without.
I mean, we'll do, I, I agree, we need to do the locate, but I, there's probably no fiber optic going through that field.
I don't, I think it just runs along the property.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would think that would be, they wouldn't have wasted fiber optic going through that field when they would have gone through them.
Anything going through there is no use. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, and so has the signs seemed to help? Has the sign seemed to help with your issue with people cutting through your, or is that?
You know, I'm going to say, yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't know, because I haven't seen anybody cutting through there recently. I thought about putting a stand-up when the festival starts and just charge a commission, because I'm pretty sure that sign would be useless then, but. But yeah, I think probably it's, it's, uh, I think the location's good, it's a professional looking sign. You can actually read it. I think probably it hasn't, it just hasn't any impact.
Okay, good.
I'm all for anything other than a fence. I don't want to see another fence anywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah, I hate that.
Glad to hear you say that. Well, I've been suggesting to the festival board, so just so you know, to use, because they've been, you know, parking is a big issue in the festival. For them to use the, the park, parking lot as a, if you need a handicap space, go there, because it's flat, it's a nice, easy. Nice page, instead of trying to park in, you know, we park, we park in this grassy field, we park in that grassy field. So I've been suggesting that.
Part of maybe that.
Parking lot.
Once they get the ice cream store in. We'll see if you guys can put a road from the back of my place and connect it to that black top part that comes into the park. Because I got people coming to get, get out of somewhere. Yeah.
If they put an ice cream shop in, it's going to be very popular. For a while anyways.
That's going to be, hopefully not, but.
Well, thank you. Any, any other public comment?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, so we have the minutes for July sitting in front of us and when the email goes to us, send those to us. Yesterday. At some point.
Make a motion that we accept them as presented.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to accept. I've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, oh, business. So we kind of tabled the discussion about the outdoor fitness center. Um, because we wanted to do some research on our own and to talk about it. And John was nice enough, like, the very next day, I believe.
I happened to be in the area. I was already in Bloomington.
He went to Bloomington and he checked it out and sent us some pictures. Um, and a video. So discussion.
This is brand new. It wasn't even open yet. If you've seen in the video, they were actually working on a tennis court that was next to it. So like, I was like, hey, and they, they. They didn't understand what I was saying, so I just walked in there and did what I needed to do, but really cool. Everything seemed really sturdy. Like you said, there were several different exercises to do. That one seemed like it was only half of what they had offered, you know, there was a whole nother side to what they offered.
So, yeah, so what they offered was, the one side was the fitness center that had all the different equipment, things on it, and then the other side was. An open kind of mat.
Right.
You could do yoga classes and dance classes and things like that.
Yeah.
And the Bloomington one did not have that.
Didn't have the additional side.
Additional side.
But it was like a whole area at IU where it's like, there was tennis courts here, there were like pickleball courts or basketball courts. It's right there at the new, uh, football practice place. So I thought it was really cool. They was able to paint it with the IU logos and stuff on it, you know.
And you were able to walk on it?
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's like the rubber almost, you know, like rubber floor, kind of bouncy a little bit, not too bad. I can see what they said, though, about getting skiffs on it and having to replace pieces, because it is, you know. They do glue it down or whatever, you know, so. But it seems real sturdy and everything. It's like a good thing people would use, you know.
Brock, you have anything to say?
I mean, just the, you know, when they're talking about me, I think it, it, it's interesting, something different. I kind of questioned on the location of where to put it. I still struggle with that a little bit as far as. Personally, kind of like over here, we're practically close to the school, where we got parents that, with kids at practice and, you know. Might give them the opportunity to use it during that time.
I know you said that, but I was thinking if it's at the park, then we got parents who can take their kids, the kids can play at the playground while the parents are exercising. Because if we do that there, then you're looking at a group of parents who, that, a smaller group of parents. That if you're looking at it to, for, to, for a draw for the parents who are over here at practice. Then you're looking at just a smaller group of parents.
We actually have more area of parking. That more people could come to it if it's over here, because you're parking for this building and. At the school.
It's not going to be like 20 people using it at once. Not right now, anyway. Maybe in the future, but right now, we don't have enough people that even go over there. To the park. I mean, but maybe they would go over there more.
Tom, when you were looking at it, did you feel like the 50 people could get on it?
No.
We're never going to have 50 people on it.
You're probably 10 max, I would say, 10 people at a time, and that might even be crowded, because some of the exercises were really close to each other. But, you know. When I was in my work clothes, I couldn't really do anything or whatever, you know, but. It, it, there, there's space there, but they probably say in the brochure how many people work on it.
I thought he had said that night, but I don't remember a team.
I mean, I say 10, but, you know.
15.
I need my space, you know, so. But if we put it over here, like, what else would go over there? Because right now, it's just a grassy block, so what else would go with it, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'd be a good place to put it at the park, just so we got some way to draw people into the park.
I mean, there's a lot of space over there. We got four acres to use, so. I, I just, ah, over here, I don't know. I guess I, I can't envision it. I just can't envision it over here, but what do you guys think?
I'm half and half.
Yeah.
I see his point, because we're over here a lot.
Right.
And there's kids that are at a track or having football practice, or even at the ball diners. But I'm, I'm half and half, because then I think, oh, that'd be nice if it was at the park, because then you're there with your kids, maybe you and a friend can.
Yeah.
Use it. I'm literally half and half.
So how long is the, what's the season for practice over here? I mean, that's just a short amount of the year.
You know, baseball, you got spring, ball, baseball, softball.
Do you know how it is over here when you try to park for these meetings? You've got all these cars here. Somebody like a senior or something that wants to use that facility would be able to get to it, whereas over here. They would be crowded with kids and cars, and wouldn't know it's parked, so.
So I think maybe the location isn't necessarily what we need to worry about right now, because, I mean, I think there would maybe.
I think we had a question about the funding, because, um, Tammy was, didn't, did Tammy get back with you or not?
I haven't.
She was going to find out if we could use park fees. What, we needed to get, we need a copy of.
Oh, no, we weren't going to find out about park impact due for this, because we know we can't use.
Well, she was going to get a copy of the park fees, the thing, the, the. The code that we, that they say we have to use park fees for, so we could know in the future. What we can use these fees for and get more creative with it, because right now, we're not using them.
Yes, because, because we asked about, um, the ADA trail, since we have an ADA to the park, if we can use it to.
Right.
Another ADA trail. She was supposed to look into that. I don't think there's any way for us to get.
Well, I would add it like we, we have playground equipment. So why can't we add playground equipment to it?
Don't know if that qualifies as playground equipment.
What would you call it?
Fitness equipment.
It's fitness equipment. It's, it's an outdoor fitness center is what it is.
So we really need the wording on that code to see what, I mean, it's up to everybody here, I guess, what they want to use it for, but. It seems silly just to let it sit there and then we could be doing stuff like this.
I thought that the grants were going to pay for most of it anyways.
We got to have 50% of it, right? Isn't that, or 20%, I'm sorry. We have to have, she said we have to have 20% of it. And it has to be funds that we raise, and that's going to be hard to do. We know, we've tried to raise funds for the park.
We, yeah.
We weren't successful. Right?
But we were led to believe that there were, um. The, there was a special GoFundMe thing that we could use.
Mm-hmm.
But that means you have to ask for donations from people, and people, we don't have enough people in this town to do donations, in my opinion. Just my opinion.
Yeah.
We couldn't even get donations for the park, you know, we did try.
We did. So I think we need to open up for a motion to even move forward with this, or to say, yes, we want to move forward, or. No, before we even get into how to fund it and.
I would make a motion.
Deciding if we need to get into it or not, is to decide if we can fund it or not.
I would make a motion to decide to move forward with seeing what our options are and seeing if we can get the financing in place.
I'll second that.
I got a motion to move forward to, to, um, look into whether or not we can get the funding and so. Moving forward with the fitness center. You got a second? All in favor? Any discussion about it?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um. I will, I'm going to the town council meeting next week, and I will take this to them and, um. Talk to Tammy more about the, and discuss with her about the, um.
She was going to get a copy of the code.
She was supposed to, yeah, especially the copy of that code. They were supposed to talk to the lawyer about it, too, that they had a meeting that.
Oh, they were going to talk to the lawyer.
Yeah, I don't know if it was the next day or the following week, that they were supposed to talk to the lawyer about it, too, so.
So we need to find out what could be, so put that on it.
So is the first step with the, the health department lady here? Should we need to engage her at all while she's here?
Yeah, you know, I have a question.
So, um. They were, so the health department had, because of money or because of cuts, you guys had closed that out, right? And you were going back to ask them if they were willing to let us move forward with that grant or keep that grant open for us?
Yes, definitely. Um, so like the reason, just to pull that apart, the reason the public association was not awarded was just because they had their own, like, legal liability. Things that they didn't want to report, besides some measure. Um, they would have been funded, uh, if they wanted to move forward with the project, but then, um, yeah, so we did. Did get that large cut in our health personnel funding, which is where these grants are coming from, so we did close our RFP process, but. Because for this exact project, uh, we had already decided to put the money toward this type of project. Um, I'm still pushing for this type of project to happen. I did talk to our health officer, who wanted to wait until after our budget sessions were over with county council. Um, so then kind of re-discuss it. So budget session ended last Thursday. I will see him tomorrow to kind of chat with him again. Um, if he still wants to move forward with opening it up, then I would just pose the question to our board and then go over there.
Agreed.
Good.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know it was a question whether or not that you guys would be willing to do it. I thought you were going to slide us in there. Now, we have to get.
We still have to, to fill out the full application process, um, and that's where Nikki, who was here last time. She already filled out the application process, wanted to have the certification, and so a lot of that labor work is basically done. We just have to make it apply to convert via. Um, and this location, how many, like, unique individuals who guys, like, are thinking that it would impact, will serve, and that kind of thing. So we're just needing to change the orbit around. But yeah, it's a full application process, and then I have to get it with my scoring team. Um, we have to ask all our questions, and then we have data requirements. All the users are familiar with grants, I'm sure. So it's all the requirements that we would have to record to the state, so as long as everyone's okay with that kind of funding requirement.
So are you the one that is doing the portion? You would fund a portion of it, or are you going to fund the whole thing?
We do not have the funds to fund the whole thing.
Okay, so.
In any way.
Okay, so are you the ones that said we have to earn the other percent? So what was the percent?
You know, so I think that was all from the fundraising project that Nikki was talking about, that was kind, it's like a GoFundMe, but for nonprofits, I think, is that what she was talking about?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, so that would be for anything that would be left over. Um, the National Fitness Campaign has their grant program, and they had awarded, I think, was it $30,000? I think it's something they had given toward the project when it was going through with the public association. Um, and then our number would be TBD, so you guys would apply for what you think, um, you would want or need for the project. And then that's what I would take to the scoring team, and you would look at our finances, we're trying to build out for the next couple of years to maintain our own internal, um, operations. And then we would just look at that and decide if we could fully fund what your ask is, or if we would be able to just get a portion of that. And then it would kind of speed up to you guys, what other, what other kind of fundraising or other grants. I mean, I think there are other grants out there for these types of things. Um, I don't have a top of my head, but just that would be like a team to find the rest of it.
So I'm still not clear on how much we need.
And I think they were figuring about $76,000.
That would be the total cash what we would need.
Yeah.
That, that was only if.
If you guys, based on what was being funded to haul.
Exactly.
So until we find out.
That's all we have to go for, go with right now, is based on what was being funded to haul, it was going to be about $76,000.
Yeah, yeah.
So we really can't do anything until we get answers from you guys, correct? Is that?
I mean.
I mean, you guys can try and find ways to collect the funding however you'd like, um, but that's just, I mean, I would just need. I want to get my board to still check that they're okay with doing that. Um, but then we would really, that's to, like, we wouldn't really put a price on it, and we're not going to say we have as much that we would give to you, unless my board or health officer wants to do that. Um, we would love for you guys just look at, you guys in the council, your own town council, um, and decide what you think you would want to ask for the project. And what would be, like, realistic for you guys to raise on your own, and then kind of go over there.
Yep.
That would be.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it definitely makes sense, but I think we should wait to, to see what her answer is, so we have a more definite amount. Because if we're going to spend $76,000 on something, I would rather see the trails go in.
So I think what, yeah, I think what's being said, though, is, um, we're moving forward, because I can't. Even when she comes back to me and says, yes, we've opened it up so you can fill out the grant, because she's not going to come back and say, we have this much money for you. We still have to apply.
Exactly.
So I think what you guys just voted on gives me, gives us the okay that was, if she comes back and says, after she talks to her supervisor. If he comes and says, yes, we will open this back up for them, and she comes back and says that, and then we, then this says, yes, let's go ahead and fill out the. Application and see where we're at, see where we stand as far as finances.
Theoretically, you guys could ask for the full $250, I'll just tell you right now, that's not a good.
Yeah.
So like, you could ask for, which I think was kind of the total cost of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Between $170 and $250, probably more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so you could make that ask, and then that's when I would just go to our scoring team, and we would relook at everything and decide.
How much this word, or how much this award airs, and what it's.
Do you remember, or are you willing to tell us what they offered haul?
Yeah, we did have, we were at $150 for haul.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It's a lot.
Yeah, that would make it worth it for us.
Yeah.
But it, it, would your grant be good for other things besides this?
That would be another, that would kind of be another discussion. This is a various unique circumstance, where like the dollars were beside for this activity inward county, and now we're just like. Where's the right location?
She's, she's pushing for this fitness, so she's pushing for the grant to be, to be opened up for this fitness.
I would still love to see this happen. But as a, take me out of the health department, I live seven minutes from here, I would love to have this, I'd like a personal visit. Um, but yeah, so, and, and we do know for all of the health reasons that having more public access, physical activity opportunities, I think maybe for the health community. So, um, I think it's important to have, but it's not just my decision to make, so, yeah. I think it's, it's exciting that someone in the meeting wants to pursue it. Um, it, it's not to say that if we wouldn't fund this, that maybe those funding could go for a different project, that's just a different question for the board, which I'm happy to pose.
Yeah, so I think we need to weigh our options, like, we have so much money and we got to decide where it's going to be the best spent. Right? Just my opinion. Whatever it's worth.
Yep. Okay.
I love the idea, but it's great, it looks like a great piece of equipment, but. Does everybody get asked going to think it's a great piece of equipment, and would it be best utilized to do that or do some other type of thing in our park?
Is this equipment mainly for, like, a certain age bracket?
All ages.
Yeah, all ages, so what it is, is, it's a, um, I wish we had a picture to show you. Um. You ever been to a gym that has one of those circuit workout equipment things where you go from one piece of equipment to another?
I've got a video I can show you if you're really curious.
It's kind of like that. It has different, um, places for you to go and do different workouts, yeah.
The only place I've been is at the chronic center, I think, so if they had one there, I'd probably seen it, just if they did.
I don't think they have one in Platteville.
Did I know it?
They got everything out.
Oh.
This is the one that they have at IU.
Okay, well, I've not seen that.
Yeah.
It's like stations and.
Different stations and different things, like pull-ups or push-ups or, you know. Dips and, you know. Yeah, I thought it was really cool.
That's for you.
Lauren will be out there every day, two or three times a day using it. Okay, any more discussion on the outdoor fitness center?
What did we decide? Just hold off and wait until we get our answer? What did we make of this? Did we make a decision?
I think we just made a decision to check in on what our financing options are, and I think the first one, the information would be to kind of find out back from.
If they're going to open.
From them to kind of give us an idea of.
The application for us, because like she said, they already, they closed their grant cycle, and she's asking if they will open it up just for us. For this project. So, um. Find out from her if they're, if they're willing to open the grant cycle, because obviously, if we have to raise. $256,000 on our own without their grant, we're not going to be able to do that, because, you know, we make $500 off our snow cone machines. T-shirts.
We worked hard.
We worked hard for $500.
I think the other question is the town council on support, too.
She said that she would, last meeting, Tammy said.
So I think if you have the town council's support and.
Yeah.
Some health department support, I don't know why we couldn't make it. I don't know why we couldn't make it.
Yeah.
I'd be disappointed if we couldn't make it happen.
Well, and.
And then someone figure out how to do the, the GoFundMe thing.
The GoFundMe thing is not like the GoFundMe that you see. It is, it is for nonprofit organizations. So it is not just going to be our community that is seeing this. It is going to be people who are out looking to fund nonprofit organization funds. I don't know if I, if that makes sense.
Uh, we're in the process of doing the budget. And if we're looking at maybe putting something like this in, we need to be able to get that in real quick.
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Lauren. And Lauren just told us if they could.
Yep. Ain't that easy?
You need to come to our meetings more often.
It's, it's, we're, we're not sure, you know, of course, we talk our budget, we have to talk about funding everybody.
Right.
And so two hundred and fifty thousand probably would not fit right now.
We, we know that.
We know.
And we were just teasing, because our nine thousand dollars a year budget does not stretch. I mean, it, it's not wanna touch this.
I'm like, man, if you think I'm a speaker.
But if, 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 if the board of health, if they, if the health department says, yes, we are willing to open this back up to them, I think it's, it's worth applying and seeing what they're willing to give us. The Go, the Go Fitness Company itself is, I mean, they said we'd have to apply again under our name, but they pretty much said we could just cut and paste what she had already done. And, and they had thirty thousand dollars. And then all we can do is try.
Definitely worth a try, yeah.
Would have an idea maybe? Just about anybody that has Medicare or supplemental insurance, it pays for a hundred percent of this stuff. You might wanna go after that.
Not a hundred percent.
Well, I mean, you could charge admission. And people that have insurance, they don't, they don't cost anything.
Well.
Not everybody, that's only certain medical insurance companies.
Yeah, we would like for, for those people to get, use it for free. So we will find another way to do it. I'm not sure that that's.
You know, back to the pathway, then I, I kind of look at the pathway as being the need for the park. And I look at the, this fitness center being an opportunity for the park.
Yes.
I mean, it's still two things that need funded. I think we have two different arguments, you know, I mean.
And we have.
We started, we started the park three or four years ago. We put the park in and I think we kind of had already said, okay, now we need to get the pathway in. This is the next thing, you know.
Yeah, yeah, in the, in the path. So we have always, we have said all along, so when we have put out there to anybody, when we were doing all our park awareness stuff and when we have put out there to anybody who would listen, and we've talked to a lot of people, our next step after the playground and the shelter was trail. I mean, it has always been, that's always been our, our goal. Now, the five-year master plan has gotten us closer to that because now that has opened up that we can apply for DNR grants. So there's nothing that says that we can't work on getting a DNR grant and getting the trail grant and this at the same time.
So it's not a choice of either or, it's a choice of when we can get each piece.
And so I'll.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Is there on the, so the, is there a timeframe that it has to be used like on your guys' end? I mean, obviously you, the longer we wait to build it, the more expensive it gets, so it doesn't. But I mean, is it a, a two-year deal? Is it a, it's gotta be silver-ready in twelve months or?
They're like, it's the one-time award that they, they send us the dollars in the beginning of the year. And then they want to see funds expended in the year that it was awarded, especially with like a decrease in the money. We just got, we know that's not feasible. A lot of health departments are holding out funding to carry them through the next couple of years. So that's just for a wrap. So yeah, so no.
Yeah, so if you were to grant us, say, yes, we're gonna give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and we say, okay, so now we have to work on raising ours, let's say seventy-six thousand. It takes us a little while to raise that. That's, that would be fine as long you see that we are working on trying to raise our portion of it. You guys would hold on to that money for us and.
So there's no expiration date on the money, once we are awarded it.
Right, that's, I, I, our big thing is we, as long, if we can show that it's been incurred, that's gonna be what the state wants to see anyway, so.
Okay.
We have the plans to do something for that.
I just wondered if somebody could go to the town and ask instead of saying, hey, we need a hundred thousand dollars. And out of this budget, could we ask for fifty this year, fifty next year? Knowing that we're not gonna start construction this year, but we would start construction in that second year.
Then how much is the price of it gonna go up between now and then?
About twelve dollars. It's gonna go up. Ten percent. If the people behind, if the guy sitting behind you, you'd let us do one.
Look, who's back here raising his hand?
I was gonna say, uh, we had grants to, to streets there in the latter edition a couple of years ago. And we could not get a contractor to bid on the project at the price of the, of the amount of the grant we had. And even, even if it was gonna cost us quite a bit more from the town to do it. And so we end up losing the grant. So this may be something that would be comparable to what comes from the health department here too. If you don't get it done in a certain amount of time, you lose your grant.
Well, she's saying.
That's what I was asking her about.
She's saying we don't.
Unless, again, the power is the, the.
Right.
The situation.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As of right now.
Okay. And I think we had, I mean, when we, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were looking for someone to pour the concrete for the shelter house, we didn't really.
That was all line is close with it.
We didn't really have too much problems. Well, we found the person who poured the concrete. We didn't really have.
Shouldn't have a problem.
Problems finding someone to pour the concrete.
Pour concrete?
For the shelter? Do you remember us having problems with that?
We had problems with getting bids on that parking lot, which I ended up contacting Glimpings and Silkfoot and they did that.
Yeah.
That's where we had issues with. But that was also at the end of the year, that year, and a lot of people were busy.
Everybody was really busy, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you have an issue with finding contractors.
I don't think we had problems with finding someone to pour the concrete. And I think the rest of it, we get the concrete poured and the rest of it is they, the, the business center people come out and build the rest of it, right? Because it's there.
They deliver and assemble, I think. And that was the other part of the C. Cause I think that's.
Yes.
They can get it like two fifty total, right? But that was, they had a pretty decent range depending on what kind of concrete.
They, yes, they had, they had, it was broken down. So they were saying the two hundred and fifty-six was a estimate because part of that was the concrete. After you poured the concrete and then, and then they, they had their installation fee and all that. But after you poured the concrete, so it would depend on if you could find you cheap con. And the person that, I mean, we got the concrete poured fairly cheap at our.
Yeah, it shouldn't be very expensive.
So I think that that also depends too. IU probably paid a small fortune for their concrete because it's.
They probably did. They probably had uni-rebar tires down there, huge concrete trucks and everything else.
Right. We do everything on the cheap here.
Would like decide which locate, like if you would get concrete for cheaper in certain location based on the quality of location or something like that, but that would decide location? If it was cheaper, I'd just.
Oh, no. It'd be the same. Yeah, as long as it's flat would be the thing.
Yeah.
And it's all flat.
It's all flat.
It's a school property, but.
It's all flat.
Driver's is small.
Yeah. But it's pretty dry around.
It's pretty dry.
Yeah, but it's not dry over there.
Yeah, up against the people's houses from Prairie Street, that's a really swampy part.
The, the park is pretty dry, because we walked down there when we first started after some pretty heavy rains.
Yeah.
The field area was actually, I was actually surprised the hell ride field area was. So it's pretty dry. Now, if you get up there in the wetland area, you know.
I drove my trucks around there and had skidsters in there and everything else.
I can't say if it's high profile. You won't be able to walk across the field.
Yeah.
I've seen that thing so far, longer you can take a boat across.
Sure, then we got a fishing pond.
We've talked about that. I think Lauren would like to have a fish, have a pond down there. She talks about, she's talked about that. Any more discussion about the outdoor fitness center?
I was just gonna ask her what her opinion was as far as, I mean, you've been around. Location wise, what do you think would be a better? You said you live seven minutes away.
We want her on our side, don't put her in a uncomfortable position. Yes.
When you guys talk about the park, were you talking about like the ball fields over here? No.
No.
She's not been to our park.
It's on Prairie Street, you might go by and see it.
Been around, yes, there we.
Do you know where Hot Rod's Barber Shop?
You know where Main Street Barber Shop is?
You know where?
The grill.
Main Street. Just, just go north of there and it's, it's the street behind it and it's right there.
Yeah.
It's on Prairie Street at the end of it.
Okay. Um.
There's a big sign there.
Where you can see.
There's about, almost five acres, just behind the houses, just along the north side of Prairie. And there is an entrance towards the west end.
There's about five parking spots, no power, no bathrooms.
We're talking up there. There's ten parking spots in the porta potty.
There is a bathroom. They go a week.
There you go.
Prairie Street. I think it's two seventy West Prairie Street.
Two seventy West Prairie Street, yeah.
Yeah, two seventy.
I think that's the address.
It's got a beautiful shelter house. It does, it does.
It's just off the beaten path.
Yeah, you'll see the big sign that says.
It's not, yeah, nothing's off, too far off the beaten path.
He's, he's proposing right across the street here.
The trail.
Trail actually. Is that what they were doing, like the, the ball practice?
Yes, yes.
The practice. They usually have cheer practice over there in that hood.
Doing something.
There's a couple little classes.
Yeah.
And the trail is, actually goes around the perimeter, well, actually around the perimeter of the park. And it'll be a mile trail that'll go around the perimeter of the park.
Okay, um, for whatever reason, in my head, it was going to go over by the ball fields.
No, we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any control over the ball fields, do we guys?
It's all by the bank.
No, we don't.
That was our thought for like whenever, as you guys were talking about, like the parents who would be at practice or something, they've already gained, maybe three games, they'd go walk the loop, get on the fitness board and then go back to the mid-game or whatever, what have you.
So when I said parent, I took my to the practice, I.
Well, then we have a couple of spots we have. Well, I mean, we have the, the smaller area there by the post office that not gonna be able to use it for anything. We got right across the street. Probably, I was thinking across the street over here by the old auction bar, more.
But do we, is that a part of the property?
Yeah, we made it all part, we have green space, just like on the corner of thirty-nine, the light here. Remember when we went there and made all the.
Yeah, but I didn't think that was big enough to put the, put this kind of thing on it.
This thing's not that big.
How many square feet?
What'd they say, thirty by a hundred or something?
Thirty by seventies, no, it was thirty by.
It's not ginormous.
It was. It's, so the lo, the biggest one is seventy-six by thirty-eight. And then if we didn't do the yoga area, it'd be thirty-eight by thirty-eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Can I approach the bench?
You're out of order.
Um, is there, yeah, I didn't know.
So on the other side of the post office right here, we have some space.
I don't know how big that space is.
And I didn't know how like amenable the schools are to allowing usage of their parking lots after hours and stuff like that, because that could take care of some of the parking.
The parking lot's open almost all the time.
Yeah, okay.
This park, or this is a school board member, so.
So this is where the park is at and the parking lot comes in here. And then we have the shelter house right here. Playground equipment all over here. And then the final plan was to have the walking trail around the whole thing. So maybe the fitness center, you know, in that corner.
So it would just be like parking would be.
Yeah, there's, well, we got ten spots over there right now. But the, the plan was also to enlarge the parking lot also.
Not in this town, yeah. Not right now, maybe ten years from now.
Yeah. Park that impact fee now to.
To more parking lot in? I think so. I think we can use the impact fee to get more parking lot.
Yep.
Yeah, the plan was that that whole stretch of the area was supposed to be all parking lot anyway, so. So what's your, what's your decision?
All right, we're not gonna put you in that decision. We want you on our side.
She surely has an opinion.
Yeah.
We want you on our side.
She said this is true.
I have no idea. You guys have a website, haven't you?
Mm-hmm.
The town though.
Survey question?
Where you could just ask for public opinion. And that's, it can't be better than that.
They are getting these surveys.
Let's get the funding scored right first.
I would rather, I would rather not ask for public opinion if we actually know we're doing this because it will blow up in our faces. About location, just because I think, let's make sure we got the funding and that before we say, okay. And then we can say, okay, we have the funding for this. Where's, would you all like to see a place? And then ask for public opinion, because I think if we did it now before we're, I think that's putting the horse.
I think you give them options to pick from.
Yeah, yes, you give them two and then you see one percent.
You'd like to see it there.
Yep, yep, yep.
It's like kids, you just give them two options.
I, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, any, any more questions about, or discussion about the outdoor fitness center?
Can you get hurt on it?
You'd probably get hurt on anything.
Can't be, huh?
You'd get hurt walking up those stairs.
You have to try and wager before you know.
Stretch too much, you get hurt, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, the, the next thing on our agenda is the discussion on the, if the park, if the impact fee can be utilized on the ADA pass to the shelter and the playground. And I never heard how that discussion went with the lawyer or if that discussion even happened. Lauren, do you know anything? Um, it's about, about the park impact fee, if there was a discussion with the lawyer about that?
I remember there was some discussion, but I don't think it was in the answer.
Okay, so I will ask town council about that.
See if they could get a copy of that code for us. I mean, if I knew what I was looking for, I'd find it for sure.
Yeah.
Do you think I should just try to find it? It might be the quickest way.
Probably in their minutes.
Might be the quickest way to do it, yeah. But another thing, Brandy made a good point is that I do believe, because we do have a parking lot, that we could use that.
For more parking space. Yeah, did I get that?
Yeah, because I wonder how Cassie's library thing, like when I showed up one time, there was so many people there. And that was last summer. I don't even know how it was this summer, I didn't get to go.
For what, what was it?
She does a library, Cassie Elliott at the, actually it's.
She does storytime now.
She does storytime in Homestead and at the park and actually in Echo Lake.
Oh.
And, um, yeah. And when I went to one of the parks, there was a ton of people there. So I don't know how parking, I don't remember. And there was like no parking spots. But that was last summer, I don't know if it still continued to be like, yeah.
Every time I go there, somebody parked wrong.
Yeah, I think I parked in the handicap spot.
At least you gotta take it a four spot.
Okay, so, so that's something for us to think about too, is if we can use it to expand the parking lot. Since we already have a parking lot, can we use it for an additional, additional parking lot?
Yeah, you could just keep going down the hill with it there, you know?
Yeah, well, it was supposed to be further down. Yeah, well, it was supposed to be further down.
Twice the size.
We only did like half, so we could.
Yeah, I can see about when people use the shelter for birthday parties.
That's going to get everybody closer to the shelter pad too, you know, pavement.
Closer to the park too, which doesn't make you seem like you're so far removed from it. Um, one of the, one of the concerns with the, having the parking lot, and I think it was Triad that maybe we talked to about this, was that if we put a parking lot all the way down, then we would have to do something about drainage, and I think that's when we were looking at having to do like the dry pond or the dry retention pond kind of thing over off to that one side, so that's something for us to think about too. Because that's, that would be an expense too, to get that ready.
I forgot about that, that is one reason we didn't get.
That was another, that was another reason that we were like, eh, because we didn't have, um, not only did we not have the funds for the full parking lot, but we also didn't have the funds for that. So, um, that's something else to think about too, is the expense of that.
Do we know what our parking pack fees build up to?
It was, as of last time, I don't know, like seventy.
Yeah, we didn't get a report just.
I had gotten a report, so I know that was a lot.
We did, in a planning permission, we did give a report on the question.
It was, um, at the last.
Oh, is it fifty thousand or is it?
No, it's seventy.
Oh, it was closer to eighty.
Almost eighty thousand, I believe. Ricky, Ricky sends it to me. Um, seventy-nine.
Nice.
What was the date on that?
That was, um, July twenty-ninth.
Yeah, so they should have a fee more.
So, I mean, it's, it's building up there.
The house is like crazy in Homestead, aren't they?
They're not too far from being done, I believe, yeah.
Uh, I think they still have another section they can open up.
Weren't they at like six hundred and thirty out of nine hundred?
I think the total plan is.
Nine hundred.
That sounds right.
I thought the total plan was like eight and a, eight eighty or eight ninety or something like that.
I'm not sure, uh, we're matched out on the sewer system, ship, bring the plant, and we're in the process of adding another, uh, tank, and I'm not sure exactly when we're going to start on that, uh, construction.
So there may not be any new.
We may, we may slow down on building.
So that'll slow down our impact fee, way to go, Lauren.
It's empty lots, they've already surveyed and everything, so.
You know, we, we have the state, we have the.
Yeah.
Happy to.
Yeah, I was teasing with you, I was teasing, it's fine. Um, so this isn't on here because I didn't talk to them until after I put this out. Um, Aquatic Design, I, I talked to them, and, um, he said he had the, um, I know I'm going to say this wrong, because I think I say it wrong every time. Moren County Water and Soil Conservation Person. I don't know what the guy's, gentleman's name is, but he came out and he looked at the wetland area for, um, invasive plants, and it's all invasive.
Yeah, they're all weeds.
It's, it's all invasive, we, we knew that, right, it's all invasive. Um, so what Aquatic Design is suggesting that we do is he has suggested that we mark off what we want planted as the, because we were talking, making part of that as, um, native wildflower area, um, actually mark off what we want that to be, that area to be, and then ask the fire department to come in and do a controlled burn and burn off all of invasive plants. Because he said if we don't do that, invasive plants will take over, and then we're not going to get the native plants to, will not be able to take root. If we do the prescribed burn, then that will kill those invasive plants, then they'll go in and put those seeds down and give those native plants a chance to take root before the native, before the invasive plants come back, because they've burned it off. So, um, so him and I were talking, and I said, okay, so the best time to do this would be in the end, be right before winter, because if we do it now, they're just going to grow anyways. So, because you're, because a lot of the native plants, you're not, we're not going to, once it's seeds down or whatever until, um, right between winter, because then they have to have coats, whatever, all that good stuff. Um, so, if it's okay with you guys, I don't know that we need to vote on this, I don't know, maybe? I guess I need to take it to the town council, since it's a prescribed burn, something like that?
We can, we can talk to them.
And, and talk to the fire department about doing a prescribed burn there at the wetland area to burn off that invasive stuff? Sometime October?
Yeah.
Did they get rid of the pile of dirt over there? Anybody, we needed a vote or anything?
That, that, uh, dirt, uh, that you need to remove, has anybody touched that?
I haven't been there, I was told that there was a, um, heavy, that, there was a, that there was a dirt move. Mover out there, that there was some of heavy equipment of some kind, not heavy equipment, but there was equipment of some kind there, so we, we assumed that that's what it was there for. Um, and Aquatic Design mentioned that whoever was doing it said, what exactly is in that dirt? And he said, everything. There might be a toilet in there, there's a tire, there's some cement blocks, we told them there's basically everything.
That was a big.
Dirt. So, yeah, so are you guys okay with me bringing that up at the town council and getting that taken care of sometime? And, and talking to the fire department? You would enjoy that too.
I wouldn't. I do enjoy that.
Okay, I will talk to the town council about, um, seeing if the fire department will come in and do some kind of field burn in, um, probably October, end of October, first party, maybe.
Will you need like someone there to help mark it off or?
So, we probably need to go and decide how much of an area we want done to turn into the, um, like wild, native wildlife area, or whatever we're going to call it. I don't know what, at one time, we used to call it the education, the wetland education, but I don't know what we're going to call it, but that area. If you guys want to meet there sometime and figure that out.
Do you want to go there after the meeting?
We can do that.
Yeah, not where we got to take it care of.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, I think the land, the, John, you've been there enough, I think the land is probably going to tell us because it's, because of the terrain itself, how rocky it is, and it's probably going to tell us where to put, do it at, more than anything.
Probably what's not moved.
Yeah. Well, I suppose there is a lot not moved, so.
Maybe further, further away.
Well, well, and some of, you're right, because some of it is very, because they weren't able to get up there with, when they were smoothing, they were going to smooth it out, and they weren't able to because of that dirt pile, and then, um, some of the rubbish that was there, and it was just not all that smooth, so they couldn't get up there with the lawnmower, so.
They never used to mow close to that pond anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I'd drive it up a big mower to it.
You were, you weren't afraid of it, were you? Well, we're going to try to make it pretty.
You got stuck in a park.
We're going to try to make it pretty, we have, so we have, Aquatic Design is going to put down, once we get the ground ready for it, they're going to put, um, some wildflower, native wildflower seeds down, I told them we want all native. So we'll put native wildflower seeds down, and then actually in the wetland area where it's wet within the, the pond area, ditch area, I don't know what you're going to call that area right there, where it's wet. They actually want to put some, the swamp, they're actually going to put some aquatic plants in that for us that will grow there. And, and again, I've told them, we want all native plants in there, we don't want any, um, non-native, so. And we talked about, when I talked to Aquatic Design, we talked about, um, like there's different places that you can go and order native seeds and say, tell them how big of an area you have, and then they just tell you how much pounds or whatever you need the seeds to do that with, so. But we have to get the area ready to do that, which is why that, they're suggesting that burn. We'll all get out there with our marshmallows and. Okay, um, I think that's all. Anybody have anything else that they feel like they need to discuss? Okay.
So moved.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys for coming.